Called to order the January 25th, 2020 County Commission meeting. We welcome all of our guests here tonight and invite you to come back at any opportunity that you might have. This time, we will recognize Commissioner Fields for the prayer and the pledge.
And by the way, this is 2021, Mayor.
2021, it sure is. My bad.
Y'all will join me. I'll open us in prayer.
Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. Each day you give us is a blessing because your word says no tomorrow is promised. Fathers, we meet tonight. We ask your blessing on our decisions that affect each member of Wilson County, state, and even our federal nation. Father, we just thank you for these 25 members of the committee and commission that have volunteered and worked for the betterment of each citizen. May you lead us in our decisions-making. Be with us. May we be an example of your love and grace and mercy throughout our lives. Father, again, we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, and it's in his name that I pray. Amen. If you will join me in the prayer, and we're going to say it the way it is written, there is no pause between one nation and other God. There is no pause. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. And Aaron, if you will, turn this mic on here because we'll have people speak and it's not on right now. Okay, well, if you would, press your yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. We'll ask you all tonight to speak into your mics. The first row have the new mics on them of both sides. The other ones are not in yet on that side. And present by telecom tonight is Commissioner Glover, Commissioner Breeze, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Robinson, and Commissioner McFarland. Twenty-five and oh present. We do not have a historian moment this time, so I'll move on to the report from the steering committee. Commissioner Patton.
The hearing commanded met in the Wilson County courthouse in regular session on Thursday, January the 14th at 6:15 PM. Motion to approve.
I got a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? The adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Patton.
I motion to adopt the agenda.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Consent agenda. Commissioner Patton.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on these? Okay. We will have to call a roll on these three because it involves money. So, two of them do. So, first of all, are you ready to vote on the consent agenda? If you are, please cast your vote. And when we finish, I will call the roll on my people on the computer. If you will, unmute yourself, or you can give me a thumbs up, either one. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Breeze? Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stafford? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero no.
Twenty-five yes and zero no. Resolution passes. Thank you. Special recognition tonight at this time, I see none, none that I know of. Okay. Report from the minutes committee. Commissioner Bishop.
The minutes committee met January the 14th at the courthouse in the commissioner's meeting room with all members present. Two sets of minutes were approved, the minutes from the special call meeting on December the 10th and the regular meeting on December the 21st. Those minutes were in your packet, and I make a motion that this report be received and filed.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Reading of the minutes?
I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Communication with chair. I'll introduce Mr. Tom Brochiers at this time to come forward.
I have two re-zonings that are on your call tonight's agenda. It was already published before we realized that we had a problem that's really no fault of staffs, but we were unable to get the public hearings published in a timely fashion. And after discussing it with county attorney over the past couple of weeks, we determined it probably would be better if I went ahead and requested deferral on behalf of county staff on those two re-zonings until we can get it published.
Make the motion.
Got a motion and a second to defer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you, and this probably means we'll have between three and six re-zonings next month. I apologize, but we will try our best to get the papers to get it published. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. I will say, from just communication from the chair, you have a new rules booklet that should be updated and on your table. So, please write "new" in it so you'll know that it is new and not get it confused with your old one. We will make changes tonight, of course, as we add people to that. I know Commissioner Bernard has the audit committee scheduled probably, I think, for the next time that we have our Thursday night meeting, so all of you are invited to that. So, I had some questions about when we would cover that, and the auditors will be here at that time if you ask any questions that you'd like to. Aaron may speak more about it later on tonight, but we did get our bond rating on this last bond that we did. We pushed hard for AAA. We've actually asked for them to come and give us a few more ideas on how we can reach that. We had a very positive rating, but it was still at AA+ with a positive outlook, which is the next best thing to AAA, but we would love to be there if we could. Sales tax report, we will send you tomorrow. It continues to still climb at a pretty good rate here. I know most all of you, or some of you, have your new laptops, and Aaron or Ken are both ready for you to get the other ones. If you have not received yours yet, they've got those in hand. Should have sent you an email today about the sirens that were tore down during the tornadoes, and they should be up, we are hoping, according to Mr. Marty Heckman, about mid-February. We did get our contract today in the mail signed with R.G. Anderson to take care of the jail, and so that is in place now. And they are still at the same place I told you the last time on submitting plans with the city of Lebanon and getting those taken care of. Other than that, that is all that I have. Are there any questions for me? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mr. Goodall now. Any additions to notary list?
I'm not Mr. Goodall, but no, sir, there's no additions.
Okay. I appreciate that. I tell you, man, it's been a rough night already. Had a cow and a calf back here in the committee meeting a while ago, and don't hear a second on the notary list. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. Sports authority, there's three members there. You are to confirm, I'm asking you to confirm, my appointment of three members to serve a six-year term on the sports authority. Upon your confirmation, we'd like to reappoint Mr. Andy Bond, Mr. R.D. Denny, and Mr. Jeff Gannon. Information about these, we're in your packet.
Aye.
Little quick.
I'll make a motion to reappoint them.
I got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing enough, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I like sign. Boza member, this is an alternate. This is a person that has done a good job of showing up at all of our Boza meetings to make sure that we have a quorum in case somebody doesn't show up. So, I've asked you to appoint an alternate member for a five-year term. I'd like to recommend Mr. Howard Blades again for your consideration. Information about him was in the packet. Do I hear a motion?
I agree.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Ag extension committee member, there was an email from Commissioner Stewart, sorry, not Commissioner Stewart, the interim director there, and he asked that we pull this until they could name all three when a new director was hired. So, that was the email I got, but I have that in front of you. Do I hear a motion or anything?
Second.
I do hear a motion to pull it and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And the director of judicial commissioners, I'd like to ask Commissioner Ash if he would speak on this at this time.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The, thank you, the committee's met several times and went through a very long process. We're bringing an individual tonight before you who I think is extremely qualified for this position. Her name is Lisa Cotterone. So, you can call her Lisa C., you can call her Lisa Coke, but I doubt you'll get it right on the first time. We would put her name in front of the county commission to be the director, Mr. Mayor.
I got a motion by Commissioner Ash and a second by Commissioner Gentry for Ms. Lisa to be our new judicial director. Any other comments or any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Mayor, would you allow her just a minute, if you could, please, sir, to let us know?
Yes. Ms. Lisa, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Aaron, make sure the mic is on in the front and let the record reflect it was unanimous. Just speak into that mic for me, that would help me.
Good evening, Your Honor.
You can pull it down. There we go. Thank you.
Esteemed members of the Board of County Commissioners, I would just like to say thank you for this amazing opportunity. I am so honored to be selected as the new director of Judicial Commissioners here for Wilson County. I take this position very seriously. I think this office has very important work to do, and it's a very important spoke in the wheels of the criminal justice system. I appreciate the confidence that each of you has entrusted in me. I pledge to perform my duties as the director of Judicial Commissioners in exemplary manner and lead the office of the Judicial Commissioners to be an example for all other jurisdictions in Tennessee to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Report from the emergency management committee. Commissioner Glover. You can turn me down now, eh?
No report.
No report. This time, on the emergency manager director's report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commission. In your packet, you'll see our year-to-date total call volume come out to 17,336, which is the highest that we've had so far since we've been keeping up with the data. So, we're still pushing forward with that. If you'll turn over to your monthly call report under the ambulance breakdown, some good information is still there, as Aaron had put out data on that a year or two ago. City of Lebanon, we ran 5797 calls, and then the county itself, 5,318. Mount Giat, 2,739. Watertown, 192. So, what I ask you to do is, you know, because this being the end-of-the-year report, all these documents right here will give you some valuable information on why we ask for ambulances in certain areas, and it's all based on this data and the districts, how many calls are actually run in your districts. So, if you don't mind, look at that, and it'll give you some good information. As the mayor had put out also in his reports and on his website, our numbers are starting to go back down as far as positive cases in Wilson County due to mainly the holidays are over with, so naturally, some of those numbers are going to go down because they've dropped testing just a little bit, of course, since we've got the vaccination side open and running, or the health department does. But those percentages are coming down, and hopefully, they'll continue to do that. Currently, as far as the vaccinations, health department's doing, we're in 1A1 and 1A2, which is 75-plus for age-based. And a lot of that is determined by the amount of vaccines that they get in on how many that they can actually vaccinate. We are adding another lane to the vaccination. We determined that today. One, it'll help with traffic, and two, it'll get more people through that they can schedule. So, we're working along with them on that. So, not too long, we probably, they probably will be moving on to 70 and over. So, that concludes my report unless there's any questions from anybody.
Commissioner Gentry?
Now, where I live, we have older people in my community, and I've gotten email after email. They've been on the waitlist for a long time, and they are 75 and older. Is there any indication of, you know, they're asking me why they haven't been notified. They've been on three or four weeks on the waitlist, and they're calling the state, and the state's putting them on the county waitlist.
Yeah, all that's determined by the amount of vaccine that we have on hand, or they have on hand. You know, we don't have a bunch just sitting there. You know, they ship so much every so often, so they can only do a certain number at a time.
Well, here's one of the issues. One of my friends called one day, got on the list, the next day, they got the vaccine. And another one said, I've been on the list three and a half weeks, and I, where am I?
Yeah, there's going to be glitches like that. I mean, there's probably no way around that. You know, some's going to get in there quicker than others, you know.
I wonder if they're going by alphabetical once you're on the list, or what? Nobody seems to know how this works.
That'll be a health department question, you know, with them. I'm just, you know, relaying my part of working with them, you know, to make sure.
Please mute your mics at home.
Also, I just want to let people, if they're veterans, the veterans.
Mr. Stafford and Commissioner Robinson.
Also contact you when they have it. Vanderbilt has started vaccinating people also in the same categories. If you're a Vanderbilt patient only, just want to let people know that.
I can, let me, Commissioner Ash will let you go ahead, and I'll give an update.
First of all, I want to thank you for what you're doing, Joy. I know how hard you're working. I know how hard the mayor's working with the public. This, here's a lot of uncertain territory right here. This problem, you know, I have an 87-year-old sweet lady lives in my house. She hasn't got on the list yet either, so this is a statewide and a national problem. Sometimes I feel I don't get offended, but a lot of people take a lot of hits for things they don't have any control of, and I'm going to offend the mayor and you and everybody else when it comes to that. So, it's across the board, guys, from Bristol to Memphis in Tennessee, same problems John's brought up. We just wanted to work through it, let the shipments come in here, and let the leaders who are in a leadership role take control of this. I don't want to have to make a decision at county commissioner level. First of all, I can't, but I know everybody, including our local health department, is doing the very best they can, so.
And just to give you some, I was going to do it at the end, but I'll do it now. Just some updates.
Just some updates on where they are right now. That 75 and up, as we got a call today, you know, they said from the CDC that Tennessee is in the top five states in the country that is doing it right as far as the way they're rolling it out, which is attacking the people that it has the highest mortality rate as far as their numbers go. That's why they stayed at 75 and above. Now, 75 and above for Wilson County in a county of 140,000 is a lot of people. They have them on the list. The thing is, you talk to people that you want to be sure about, if they've got on the list, make sure they've got a confirmation email. If they got that, just tell them to hang on. They will get there and get to them. They are doing, trying to do 600 a day now, and they're only doing, as Commissioner Ash said, the number of vaccines that they get in per week. They get a shipment in every week. 80,000 right now to the state of Tennessee, and then they ship them out to 95 or 89 different health departments and then some other different clinics and stuff, get those in hospitals each weekend. And that's what she said today. She said, "We don't know what we're going to get until then." She said, "I will tell you this, we got 35 counties in Tennessee that are distressed, that don't have the health care that some other counties have, so we're giving them more vaccine. We will get to you." Just so you know, Delmar Pharmacy in Mount Giat, Buckeyes here, Vanderbilt Hospital, they have all been certified. So, when the vaccines start rolling in here, they'll let those people do the vaccines, okay? But, and they'll schedule them from the health department for those people to go there. So, they'll say, hey, they'll send 200 to Buckeyes and 200 to Delmar, but they'll stay along that threshold. 75 and up is where we're at now. As they get the majority of that list done, then they're going to go to 70 and up, and teachers, that will be the next phase that they go to, and they'll let everybody know at that time. But, just, I know y'all get calls, I do too, and people say, well, you know, in Smith County, they're already doing the teachers, and that's true. But, we said, hey, can we send our people to Smith County? And they said, no. Every county's allotted a certain amount according to their population, so we can't do that. So, they just said, hang on and be with us. We have, you know, people will call me, I put my number on Facebook, and they'll call me, and I'll get their name down, their birth date down, and the phone number, or email they want to get contacted, and Sarah will put them on our office for Brooke, or, you know, we'll give, I'll shoot a scan of it and send it to Brittany, and she'll get them on, and they'll get an email right back. Some people do get quicker than others. You're exactly right. I think they go to them the best they can, but they are, as he said, busting their tail to get as many people scheduled every day. The sooner they get this over, the better they are. And as of last week, they started doing the second round for a lot of people. So, there are two lines out there right now, one for second shots and one for first shot. They are bringing them in 15 minutes, 15 people every 15 minutes, which keeps the crowds down, and that's a good thing. We did have a traffic jam one time, I think, last week, but we've got that taken care of now. So, any questions you get, or anybody, I don't mind, just give them my cell number and have them call me, because we're dealing with them one at a time and don't mind doing it. That's a service that we need to provide. So, they give you some calls, and you say, hey, call the mayor, and here's his number. And I, we'll do that because you've got enough to do during the day, and it is my day job. Mr. Gentry?
Whenever you give us emails, I pass them out to all the people.
Yes, sir.
That I have that have been asking me, and the word does get out from the emails that I receive.
So, we send them to you, we send them to the city councils in all three cities, and the mayors, and then the group on the task force. So, we push it out. You're welcome to push whatever we give you out to anybody you'd like to. So, we're doing our best to get as much information out as possible, so thank you for that. Any questions on this for me? I got a motion to approve his report.
Second.
And a second. I do have a motion by somebody and a second. I'll make the motion. All right. Got a motion and a second by Commissioner Patton, motion by Commissioner Ash. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee. Commissioner Rich.
No report.
And our sheriff's report. Sheriff Ryan.
I went to Vanderbilt. Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your report's in your packet. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Actually, the calls for service there is down a little bit because, probably because it's December, Christmas, and different things going on. I'll again say the county jail population is the same, just about the same number was pre-COVID. Mayor mentioned a while ago the contract signed on the jail, and I appreciate that. They have started putting up some fencing, and hopefully, they'll get moving on that pretty quick. So, quicker the better. Inmate work crews, we've got them out every day of the week. I know some of you called me about some problem areas, and if you see anything that needs attention, please let us know. About Corona and the shots, I want to commend the mayor and Director Cooper for all they do, and like I said to Mr. John, you know, they're doing with what they got, and I sat there and watched them the other day, and they're getting people through as quick as they can, and the information's getting out there, and we see a lot on the news how bad things are in some other states, so we're really not seeing that. We're having some glitches, but they're working through them, and I hopefully, hopefully I'll see, since I'll get through this better in 2021. I would ask that Corona's COVID-19's, we've got a lot of county employees that's been affected by this disease. You've got a lot of county employees that's hurting right now. Our office has two people that's lost spouses because of it, and I've got one right now that's in ICU, and she's not doing good. And I just ask that you thank them, their family, during this hard time, and keep them in your prayers. That could close my report unless there's any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Brian.
Aye.
Report from Education Committee. Commissioner Stafford?
No report, sir.
Okay. Director of Schools report, Dr. Donna Wright. Our people at home can mute.
Good evening, Mayor. County Commissioner. Brief report tonight, returned to school after two weeks of remote, which we were so happy for that had. I can't see in school, but we all know, but we're still facing COVID.
Aaron, can you?
Chairman of the area educators.
No, she's muted.
Sounds like something from Star Trek.
Please mute. Thank you. Lord Jesus.
Okay. Is that?
No, it's still echo. Still echo. Go ahead, Dr. Wright.
I was going to say, I promise to be brave tonight. Anyway, back to school. And just a few things.
Report, report, report.
Wait, Dr. Wright.
What if I get away from that? I've got my old principal voice.
Come here, you at home.
Well, that one.
It ought to be here.
Okay. With that, just wanted to address the fact as far as that several things that we are looking at right now. I noticed that the comment is for us teachers and educators being moved up to 1D, and, you know, that keeps getting shifted, and so I know you hear it because I've had a couple of you call me with the concern that when are teachers going to get vaccinated? Parents are desperate for our teachers to be vaccinated so we can get in school, but there are also the impression that once the vaccination is done, that everything goes away, and so we're having a hard time getting them to understand that that's not how it works. So, there is a desperation. If we want to be vaccinated, I'll be the first in line when we get there. So, if you hear of that, if you get any calls, just have them call me, and I'll walk them through it, but there is a desperation there. We just gone to the second rounds of CARE Act fund. Our district received $5.6 million in the ESER 2.0. We are... We are thankful for it, but when it came down to looking at distribution across the state, we are at the, the lowest. Um, part of it's based on economically disadvantage or poverty numbers, which our poverty numbers go down, and, but then that's something that's masked. And also our ability to pay. Uh, Rutherford County got close to sixty million, um, Metro, one point, one twen- one hundred and twenty-three million. Uh, Shelby County received nearly two hundred million dollars. Not that I'm resentful or anything. Uh, Clarksville received, uh, twenty-six million. And then some of the smaller counties, again, because of that poverty, uh, level, received, uh, anywhere from twelve to thirteen million. Uh, Will- Williamson County's with us. They received only two point three million. And it was based on that. But again, uh, that's, those are dollars that we didn't have is to be used for, uh, either technology, looking at learning loss or acceleration, but also looking at air purification systems as far as in your building. So we will put that to good use and I will keep this body informed of what we're doing. And, uh, with that, you'll note, um, as far as what we have expended so far for COVID, I think that's important to note because that was a surprise to many districts. And, um, and much of it not something that you would have budgeted for. With that, I would like to introduce, uh, to everyone tonight that, uh, our new CFO, Michael Smith. Michael, if you'll stand up. Many of you already know him. He was greeted as he was coming in. Uh, he spent, uh, six to seven years as the lead auditor for Wilson County Schools as far as, uh, coming in, spending a month at a time, um, as far as auditing our books. Uh, he also was the lead auditor, I believe, for, for, uh, Wilson County Government. So, uh, well-known, well-respected. But the one that brings me a little bit of pause, he was also lead investigator for the Comptroller's Office as far as looking for fraud and abuse. So, um, I'm sure that will, um, keep us all in check. But I say that tongue-in-cheek. We are very happy to have him. And he's a great addition, uh, to our team. So with that, I want, that concludes my report for the evening. And, uh, barring any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discuss- Commissioner Patton?
Dr. Wright, I just want to tell you how glad I am we are back in school because I've done all the Common Core math I want to. I never wanted to learn, but I fit, finally figured it out and I am glad they're back in school.
Okay, well, we have a, a thing called Parent University that you can go to. We are, uh, we've got parents that are signing up, uh, because to improve their own math skills. But they are quickly to inform us that that's not the math that they were taught. So I understand.
I get the same answers, but yeah, I had to go through two different, their process, my process and then their process.
Yeah, well, as long as you don't get the, the one as far as, uh, that's not the way that my teacher teaches it, you know, you're.
Yeah, that's what she told me to start with and I said, "I don't want to do it."
Dr. Wright, Dr. Wright, we would also like to present you with a, a resolution here that's for School Board Appreciation Week, which is January the twenty-fourth through the thirtieth. And if you would present this to your school board and we thank them for what they do for us.
Absolutely have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Wright? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Uh, I will go back to, try to go back to not echoing. Uh, Aaron, one more job for you. Uh, Ms. Stafford has been, uh, lost from the connection. Is there any way for you to help her get back on? You have, uh, a report for the Register of Deeds. Uh, Ms. Murphy put a report in your, uh, packet. Uh, and she said, "If you have any questions, please give her a call." But I would take a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Everybody hear me at home okay? Yes, good deal. Trustees' report, uh, we also have that report in your, uh, packet as well. And, uh, seeing no questions there, I hear a motion to approve the trustee's report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Road Superintendent report, Mr. Murphy, is with us tonight. So everybody at home can hear me okay.
Mayor Commissioners, in front of you, everybody should have your new, uh, road list for the year. Uh, our guys are out patching, doing some patchwork when weather permits. We ain't had too good of weather, but we're, we're trying to get some patching done. We got, our arm mowers are out mowing, doing, doing, going across the county and trying to catch up some places. Uh, just doing our regular maintenance, maintenance on our equipment. And that's all I have. It concludes my report.
Motion to approve.
I just, how many?
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Gentry?
I'm sorry. How many miles of roads do we have? County roads, not city?
Eight, eight hundred and fifty-six miles.
Eight hundred and say?
Eight hundred and fifty-six miles.
Eight hundred and fifty-six, okay, thank you.
It's at the very end here. If you look at the end here.
Oh, is it? Okay.
And that's one way too, right?
That's one way, yes.
You have to double that, going both.
That's the road, both ways.
That's just one way.
That's what I mean.
That's one way. That's, that's one lane of my, of road.
Yeah, I understand.
And for our new commissioners, in that road list, uh, if you remember, there is a five-year maintenance plan in the back, so they have a five-year plan. But it's in not any particular order, uh, because they don't move their equipment all across the county. They move it from spot to spot. So just so you know, they got a plan is one thing, but second, it is not in particular order. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
How many dead ends do we have?
Seven.
Dead ends. We're on one.
Dead end, that's a good question.
Any other good questions? How many one-lane bridges do we have?
Oh, lots.
Uh, do we have?
Forty-nine. Forty-nine, I think.
Forty-nine.
No, two hundred bridges. But that's two hundred bridges.
One lane?
No, not one lane.
One lane, yeah, one lane. Any other good questions?
Any other good questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Murphy?
It just gets better. Uh, Ag Center report, Mr. Quentin Smith.
I think Gary's read all the books. There he is.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioners, it's been a while since I gave you all an update at the, uh, Ag Center. Uh, one thing that I, I got wrote out here and I'm gonna read to you because I've had several of you ask me about the, uh, the light show this year. Uh, the light show, uh, created a lot of pro- uh, problems with traffic. Many of you know that. But anyhow, I'm gonna go through what, what it did bring to our community. Uh, Fiddler's Grove Historical Society was donated six hundred tickets. Uh, they start, uh, started out selling those at twenty bucks. They got rid of, uh, the, the majority of them. And then they went on down, I think, and sold them for, for less than twenty. But, uh, that was a pretty good donation to Fiddler's Grove. Tennessee Kidney Foundation, uh, they got twenty thousand out of their ticket sales. Ronald McDonald House got twenty thousand out of their ticket sales. Salvation Army, the local chapter, uh, they set up a ticket booth and they got ten thousand dollars. Uh, Joseph Storehouse, they got, uh, thirty-five hundred pounds donated in, uh, canned foods. There was three thousand seven hundred and fifty families that were admitted through the light show free of charge. They were veterans, first responders and healthcare workers, uh, that, that first week. Then what we got, uh, paid on, we got paid on, uh, uh, fifty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-six is what we got our dollar maintenance fee on. Uh, then besides that, we got sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the, the only thing that we didn't get this year was the rental fee on the, uh, the tent that we usually have out there, uh, Santa Claus Village. So we missed out on that. Uh, the other thing, uh, Mike, uh, Scaff, who's the guy that owns the show, committed to me too, that wants to his accountant, uh, tells him how much he can do. He's gonna help me with some paving out there, uh, this time at the, uh, at the, uh, Ag Center. Uh, things we got coming up, uh, we've got a big hog, we had a big hog show this past weekend. We've got another large, uh, hog show coming in this weekend. Uh, we've got, uh, Circus is gonna be with us in February. Uh, we got Little Bridge's rodeo. Uh, I know that that was one night when y'all was, uh, meeting here. That was one of the reasons I couldn't be here, that we was negotiating with them, uh, a contract to, for them to make, uh, James E. Ward Ag Center their, uh, home. So we've got them under contract for, for like three years and ho- hopefully farther than that. We have had one rodeo in November with that group and it, it was a really huge success. Uh, brought, brought us in a whole lot of money. We will have another one in February and they're scheduled for, for actually three more then later on. So far, we haven't had anything Mother Earth news. Uh, we were expecting to be there in, in May. They have canceled on us. So they canceled last year. They're, they're, they're rolling over again, uh, another year. So we ended up to give them their deposit back, but, but they're not gonna be there. Everybody else so far, uh, we got Airstream coming in. We got Junior Red Angus National Show, uh, Redneck Rumble, which all of you know. Uh, they didn't back off any. They had their two events last year and they're planning on having, uh, both of them this year. We've been really busy. We've took in, uh, a, a whole lot of, uh, contracts on different deals where people's canceled others out. And, uh, after they've visited with us, they've decided that they'll s- stay with us. So a- a- actually, the coronavirus thing's kind of been positive for us. So far, we ain't had anybody at, at the Ag Center that's been deathly sick. We've had maybe, uh, I think we've only had like one maybe employee that, and she was part-time that has come down with the coronavirus. So a- anybody got any questions for me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Is there any way that, uh, the Ag Center can tie in with the NASCAR event in June? Would maybe some show cars or drivers, et cetera?
That wouldn't be a problem. They, they have come out. The, that guy's been out and met with us out there. So we're, we're telling them we worked with him any way we could.
Any other questions, Mr. Quentin?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Quentin.
Thanks, Quentin.
Uh, the Expo Center report, uh, Ms. Gail called today. She had a little trouble with, uh, um, health-wise. She will be here next month for a presentation that she will give you. So I will move forward on that one. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Public Works Committee met January the eleventh at five thirty in the County Commission Room. The minutes are in your packet. Move, they will be received and filed.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Menard.
No report.
Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker.
No report.
No report. Developing Tourism, Commissioner Van Aden.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
Uh, Health and Wealth, Health and Recreation Committee met tonight at six forty-five. Uh, those minutes will be in your packet next month.
Okay. Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover? If you could unmute. Or Commissioner Ash?
The Judiciary Committee met, uh, January the fourth here in this room. Again, January the eighth. Those minutes are in your packet. I guess they'd be approved.
Right, Director.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion now? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland? Say it one more time, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
No report. Thank you, sir. Just pushed, had to turn you up a little bit. And Aaron? You can cut my mic down here, please. Can you cut the one down at, at the podium? I think that's what giving us the feedback. Are we good?
Good.
I don't think so. We might have a hard time hearing them when it comes time to vote.
They may have to give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Good for me. Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Mr. Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board met January the eighth. Minutes in your packet. Received and filed.
Right, Director.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. Hey, Aaron, with IT. Hey, Aaron? What's the best way for us to move forward on this right here when people start hearing? And you come talk to me. Go ahead, Aaron.
My report is in your packet. I would just like to log on if you want to, so I will be here when you can. But, uh, quickly, uh, in the general fund, your revenue is here today. You received fifty-four point six percent, point seven six percent, excuse me, a budgeted revenue, which includes fifty-five, point five, almost point six percent of property taxes. And your expenditures are at forty-six point one four. We continue to talk about how revenues are trending ahead or where we would have been just paid. That's very exciting for us. Uh, I don't know if Michael was still here or not. He may have had to go. But, uh, auditor comes from an old Latin term. It means he is inhuman and without soul. And when Michael was here, I say this as a reformed auditor. I'm, I was an auditor myself, okay? So when Michael was here, I knew he wouldn't remain an auditor because he was both human and had soul. And we got along extremely well. Yes, he still took a finding of me. Uh, but, uh, he's a, he's a great guy. I think you like him a lot. And, uh, I'm happy to, happy to be working. Uh, don't really have anything else unless you have any questions for me. We will need to schedule an audit committee meeting to go.
We're gonna schedule it next month for us.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve the report and a second. Any discussion? Any questions from people at home? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met Thursday, January the fourteenth, uh, here at the courthouse. Meeting, uh, minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. I think, I think we're good, I hope. Who knows? And unmute your mics at home now, if you would, please. And we'll be ready to try to tackle this if we can as we go through these resolutions. Please unmute your mics at home.
Okay, Resolution Twenty-One dash one dash four to classify the public roads in Wilson County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record reflected in the analysis.
Resolution Twenty-One dash one dash five, establishing the annual salary of the Director of District Commissioners at sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars per year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Now any discussion from anybody? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland? Do what?
It's aye.
And I can't hear him, and they can't hear you. That's what I mean. Got a aye? Commissioner Walker? I'm sorry, Commissioner Patton?
What? Oh, it's flashing over here.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker? Aye. Commissioner Robinson? Aye. Commissioner Breeze? Aye. Commissioner Glover? Aye. And Commissioner Stafford? You're allowed to unmute, Commissioner Stafford.
She's on her phone.
I see you on there. You're on the phone.
She's on her phone.
She's on her phone, but she is muted. Can you unmute, Commissioner Stafford? Commissioner Stafford, can you text me?
I just texted her and told her to vote.
Hang on a second. You go to aye? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution Twenty-One dash one dash six to amend the budget appropriation resolutions for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year to make additional appropriations from the capital projects fund to win a month. to WEMA.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland? Got a aye. Commissioner Walker? Got a aye. Robinson? Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Commissioner Stafford is yes. All hearts and minds good? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash seven, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriations from the capital projects fund to WEMA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner, aye, excuse me. Commissioner Dow?
Fisher, but.
Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stafford voted yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash eight, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the Stormwater Reserve account to Stormwater.
Motion to approve.
But, Ms. Chairman, didn't you say, Dave, that they'd be amended?
Yes, I did have a, some conversation with Stormwater. That truck can be bought for thirty thousand fifty dollars. So, if you would like to make that amendment, then somebody can do that right now.
Make that motion.
So, Commissioner Patton made the motion to amend from the forty-three thousand down
to the thirty thousand fifty. There are a second on the amendment?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Gentry. Any discussion on the amendment?
So, that makes it thirty, what'd you say?
Thirty thousand fifty dollars.
Good.
All in favor?
All in favor for the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can I do that?
You just did.[1277.12][1277.12](Laughter).
Then I'm going to vote.
Now, we're going to vote on the original motion as amended. So, you'll be voting now to move out of Stormwater funds into their fund, thirty thousand fifty dollars, to buy a truck.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. It does get tricky up here.
We just saved some money.
That's a good thing.
Okay. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Stafford, and I lost, voted yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash nine, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund into planning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Stafford votes yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero no.
Twenty-five yes, zero no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash ten, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriations from the general fund into pay communications.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second now. Any discussion? Anybody? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Stafford? Votes yes. And Commissioner Vanatta?
Thanks.
All hearts and minds good with the way you voted? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent.
Twenty-five yes, zero absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash eleven, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the general fund to judicial commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Now, discussion. Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, at the very bottom, just for the record, could we change where it says judicial commissioner to director of judicial commissioners?
You can. Do I need to do anything special, Mark? Any other discussion or questions on this resolution? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stafford votes yes. Any conversation further? All hearts and minds good? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero no.
Twenty-five yes, zero no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash twelve, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from capital projects to information technology.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion now? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Stafford votes yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero no.
Twenty-five yes, zero no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash thirteen, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from capital projects to county buildings.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Menard? Good, thank you. Commissioner McFarland?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Breeze?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Glover?
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Stafford votes yes. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Twenty-five yes, zero no.
Twenty-five yes, zero no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 21 dash one dash fourteen, to approve a contract of purchase of property on Clemmons Road for a WEMA fire station.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. This is a contract mic, so can I go all in favor? Voiceful? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous.
Okay, Resolution 21 dash one dash fifteen, to approve a contract for purchase of three tracts of property on Central Pike for a WEMA fire station.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Here a second?
Second.
Got a second? All, any discussion? Anybody?[1742.73]